Hi and welcome to a special election edition of Newsmakers. I'm Jerry Roberts. It is Monday, September 19th, 50 days before the November 8th election. And I'm very pleased first to welcome Gwen Lurie, editor in chief of the Montecito Journal, with whom Newsmakers is collaborating on this series of online election forums focused on education at all levels in our community. Welcome Gwen.
Thank you, Jerry.
And today we'll be speaking with the two candidates for the Santa Barbara County School Board trustee area one, which encompasses Carpinteria, Montecito, and Summerland. And they are the incumbent Mary Beth Cardy and the challenger Roseanne Crawford, who is identified on the ballot as parent slash grandparent. Thanks.
Jerry, you cut out for a moment when you said Mary Beth's name. So if you could say Mary Beth again.
I'm sorry. Let me back up to Mary Beth's introduction. Mary Beth Cardy, the incumbent member of the board and the challenger, Roseanne Crawford, who is identified on the ballot as parent slash grandparent. Thanks to both of you for taking the time. The format for our discussion is pretty informal. We'd like to make it as conversational as possible. We'll rotate questions between candidates, and each will have about a minute to answer. And at the end of the program, each will have time to deliver a closing statement. And with that, I'll turn it over to Gwen.
I'm going to just briefly give you some of the background of both candidates. Mary Beth Cardy, the incumbent, has served on the board since 2013, representing trustee area one. She's lived in Carpinteria for over 45 years and was named carpenteria of the carpenter, carpenteria. Is that what it is?
Carpenterian.
Carpenterian of the year in 2001. Cardy is the executive director of the Natalie Orfola Foundation. She spent 15 years as the community partnership manager for Venico, directing the company's charitable giving and philanthropic outreach. She also worked for the Carpentry Unified School District for nine years administering grant funding for educational programs. She's a board member and past president of Partners in Education and vice chair of the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuses Fighting Back Mentor Program Task Force. Cardy started the Carpenteria Women's Fund known as Hearts of Carp. She serves on the board of the Carpenteria Children's Project, chairs the Carpenteria Women's Club, and the steering committee for hospice of Santa Barbara's Compassionate Care of Carpinteria Initiative, and is on the advisory board for the Linda Fairley Carpenteria Art Center and the 93103 Fund. And I only breathed a once while saying that. Roseanne Crawford is a, has been involved with following education for over 30 years. She's a team member of the Coalition for Neighborhood Schools. According to Ms. Crawford, she has been an active participant in her own children's education in Santa Barbara for over 15 years. She left a career as a radiation protection specialist for the state of California in order to be more involved in her kids' education as a PTA mom and then taught part-time at Santa Barbara City College. She's the director of the Santa Barbara Puerto Vallarta Sister Committee Exchange Program, and also points out that she was raised in a bilingual household and is a Spanish speaker. And I believe she was also a member of the Citizens for Neighborhood Schools since 1999. So there you have it. There are the two candidates running for the Santa Barbara County School Board area one. And the first question goes to Roseanne. Can you tell us, what is the role of a county school board member? And why do you want to do it?
Well, the county board of education consists of a board of seven trustees that help monitor many things over a vast area. There's a budget of $100 million with over 500 employees. And there's lots of different programs. There's educational development and credentialing programs with mentorship to teachers and administrators, different programs and partnerships. They're directly over the juvenile court and community schools, which actually receive all of our kids that fall between the cracks, that did not get an equal education, that didn't get a fair chance, that ran into problems for this reason or that reason. And so I think it's very important that they have a diverse team of board members there, that they have people that can actually talk with some of these people that come before them and understand. And I want to turn things around.
Okay. Thank you. Mary Beth, can you answer that question? I think a lot of people don't know what the county school board does. So can you answer that question for us? And, and why do you want to continue on as a board member?
I can. It is a misunderstood office. The county board has oversight on the specifically the Santa Barbara County Education Office budget as it applies to the juvenile courts and community schools. We set SB CEO board policies, approve the SB CEO local control and accountability plan. And we serve as an appellate board. And this is an important function because with respect to inter-district transfer requests, student expulsions, charter school applications that have been denied by the local district, we, we hear and act upon those denials. So there's ed code adherence and compliance to be considered. And then why do I want to run? I have been serving since 2013, and this is kind of in my DNA. The idea that schools must continue to be cornerstones for democracy. They are really the place where the playing field can be leveled. There's a lot of power and promise in our public education system.
Hey, I'm going to give you both this when you're getting about 10 seconds out rather than trying to interrupt you via Zoom, which doesn't work.
So the next question goes to Mary Beth first. The race that most recently drew the most attention surprisingly was for county superintendent. Who did you support for that and why?
My support went wholeheartedly to Dr. Susan Salcedo. I was the board president when we had occasion to consider the replacement for Bill Saroni, and Susan just rose to the top of, of the list. She is, she leads with integrity. She's one of the most intelligent people I've ever met. She's accessible, fair, a great communicator. And she does this job so well. And ask anyone who works for her, she leads a team that I have often said could literally rule the world. They're extremely smart, extremely knowledgeable, really compassionate. And I believe, as Susan did, that there's some misinformation proliferating right now that the county school board has oversight into the district choices. And that is absolutely incorrect. And we all stand for fairness, inclusion, and integrity. We sit on that board. That's a given.
Roseanne.
While it's correct that they do not have direct oversight, they absolutely have influence. When you are controlling and approving the budgets, you just broached on LCAP, Local Control Accountability Program. This affects the English language learners, the special needs, the socioeconomic disadvantaged, homeless, and foster youth. You need to look at those categories very carefully, and you need more transparency. So I just wanted to make that one comment there. I think it's very important that we keep an eye on that.
All right. And do you want to answer the question about who you supported for superintendent and why?
Oh, I was very supportive of Dr. Salcedo. I thought she was great. I have her in high esteem. There were some frustrations that developed frankly when she was not accessible. We've just been talking about accessibility. And she would not return a call when there was a pressured situation where we were trying to, the Coalition for Neighborhood School was trying to receive a backdoor link from the League of Women Voters. And that whole thing got thrown off track because Jerry, you in the final hours recommended to the League of Women Voters that they have Kristi Lozano sign a piece of paper saying she wouldn't use part of that to do her little clippings like she would. And so I think that's what put that off the rail. And so they pulled out. We were just trying to keep it together and couldn't reach her. And so yes, accessibility is very important. And yes, I do think Dr. Salcedo is doing a good job. I do think that she's gotten the message that accessibility is important and transparency. She's really gotten that message because she just started her first monthly, I think it's a monthly or quarterly newsletter, and it looks really good. It shows a lot of the programs that they're doing. And so she's really reached across.
Yep. And that's, that's my old friend, Kami Barnwell in there. That's what she's pitching. All right. Well, let me follow up on that, Roseanne, if I could, because during that whole set to about the League of Women Voters debating who was going to pick it up and, and what was going to happen. You, you placed a very famous phone call, as I recall, to, to her and which you told her, among other things, to pull up her big girl pants and do the debate. Were you at all concerned that, about the, the level of civility of that comment vis a vis, you know, kind of where we are with our politics these days?
No, frankly, no. And I think I said something that most people were thinking were afraid to say. And yes, I think people have laughed about it. And the whole point is, the moment was very heated. We had the whole crew with TV Santa Barbara standing by. We had the coalition ready for the backdoor link. We had all these pressures within hours. And so when we can't get a response, sometimes you need to escalate the conversation to get a response. And so at any rate, I don't know if that was the answer that you particularly wanted from me, but there you have it.
Yeah, just a quick, quick follow-up on that. It's, I don't think there's any, you know, answer from anyone wanted. I think, you know, part of that message, if I remember correctly, was that you would ruin her and that you have very powerful friends. And it was that, is that not true?
That is not true. And I think that was misinterpreted absolutely because I had gone back and forth with the League of Women's Voters directly on the phone that day. And I said, please, let's keep this on track. I think the community deserves a forum that they need to hear from both candidates. In fact, I said, I'm a Susan Salcedo supporter, but both, we need to hear from both. And so at any rate, I think that's enough on this. And can we focus on, on our stuff?
We were going to give you one question that was specific to you. Mary Beth, the question to you is, you know, obviously the, the, you know, Santa Barbara County schools are struggling right now with test, test scores and preparedness and all of that. Why should we support an incumbent?
Well, thank you for that question. As I started to say earlier, what a school, a county school board candidate or trustee is able to do is to have jurisdiction over the Santa Barbara County Education Office programs, of which JCCS, Juvenile Court and Community Schools is one. What you were talking about earlier, Roseanne, the LCAPs for each district, that would be in the purview of Dr. Salcedo and her team. They'll review all those, and we don't have oversight over that. So just to make that clear, because it is an important distinction. You know, I have some really encouraging feelings about going forward. I really believe our test scores are a moment in time. They're a snapshot. But the assessment that needs to take place is on a daily basis. And that's a teacher as a child is received into that class or being welcomed, feeling included, having families that are invited to partner with schools with an aim towards student success. Every single student, we're talking about our entire, entire county footprint, they come to school with something different. There's lots of levels of trauma and need. Is that child fed? Have they had enough sleep? Is there anyone there to support them? So there are things in place that are helping us, transitional kindergarten being one, that will allow us an early, early opportunity to introduce best practices in literacy and exposure to books. And then also I'd love to put a plug in for the volunteers who will actually show up and, and be there to read with kids and increase that mastery level of language and get, get to comprehension. And I'll tell you more about that later.
Okay. Let me, let me just follow up and try to drive a little further wedge here because what I'm hearing is the two of you have slightly a different interpretations and understandings of how broad the brief for the county, the county board is. Roseanne, you, you heard Mary Beth's commentary about the test scores and the, and the different things. What's your take on that? Do you think the county board could have more influence on that than it is now?
Well, I do because they recommend programs throughout the county for schools. And so really it's, they could set an example, even though granted, the school districts are autonomous and making their decisions as such, they do have a lot of influence. And it is their responsibility to look at trends and study things that come about. Granted, there's, there's actually a, there's a 32-page document that explains the statutory functions of county board of education and saying this, 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 this. But there's a lot of soft power and it, it's not being used. And I do feel that we have a failed educational system. I don't think we're going to be able to achieve equality without addressing that. And one of the biggest, thank you.
Fair enough. Mary Beth, you, you want to respond to that? I'll give you 30 seconds. You know, you have soft power that you're not wielding and you, and you, in furtherance of improving our failed education system. Roseanne too.
Number one, there are victories every single day. We like to make sure we count them. We all agree that literacy is essential. We want students to learn. We'd love to see test scores improved. Soft power. I'm not really sure what that means, but I know that we can, we can afford the teacher trainings and opportunities for professional development. And we do. We, we certainly support teachers as they move into dual language immersion programs. We have lots of resources available to us in that, in that regard. And that budget that you refer to, Roseanne, 86% of that is facing students and teachers and schools. And it's in support of learning, and that tells you about the values of county ed. Third grade is a benchmark for literacy. Yeah, we're all driving toward that. And it's really heartening to see that the state of California is moving back into the reassessment, having a task force there. As I said earlier, we've got neurodiverse kids coming from different opportunities. They have a need for differentiated instruction. So it is not a one-size-fits-all silver bullet that will get us there. It is teachers doing their best to assess on a daily basis, parents in partnership with a voice, and students feeling accepted, seen, heard, and welcomed.
All right. Thank you.
Can I, can I say something real quick, Jerry? I just want to respond to that. Thank you. Regarding the LCAP budget, I ran a business for 30 years, Childtime Professional Nanny Placement Service, LLC. I had a lot of administrative experience in doing so. And on that note, tying it to the budget, when I look at a budget, look, look at an LCAP budget, I want to see a line item. It says exactly where the money's going, not an intention of where it's to be spent. In a meeting last year, I pulled up a PDF. They were trying to fund the library out of LCAP funding. I raised my hand in Zoom and I said, hold on. I said, are you telling me that only 65% of students that are qualified under LCAP uses the library? No. Pull it out of the regular budget and pull it out of LCAP and put that under the regular budget, what they did. But unless people do that, unless they take the time and know how to research, that's not going to happen. And so, thank you. Just wanted to say that.
Thanks. I've, I've lost track of who gets it first.
What do you think, and this one goes to Roseanne first, what do you think should be the top two or three priorities of the new money coming from the state? And go ahead and answer that.
Absolutely. The top two priorities would be mental health. The pandemic was just dreadful, what it did. And how the schools choose to operate or not operate is a big part of that. So mental health is very important. The early learning, the TK programs, fabulous. That really is one of the few things that might begin to level the playing fields, but that's not all. We won't have equality until they stop tracking. Till they stop tracking kids that are English language learners all the way through school.
Yeah. Mary Beth, how much authority does the board have over mental health of the program?
Authority? Well, we don't have authority over mental health programs, but we have the collective bargaining power. We actually just were very successful in getting a multimillion dollar state grant. And that is in partnership with SB County Behavioral Wellness. That money will go to each of our districts to increase in-school mental health support for students and families. And there's been teams that are hired for mental health coordinators. There are navigators now that can help Spanish-speaking families find the resources that will serve them best. And one of our favorite partnerships, I'm, I'm not sure if you're familiar with YouthWell, Rachel Rostedl's organization, and that brings additional countywide resources to youth. It's really, really about partnerships. And partnerships are, are galvanized in the ability to collaborate, reach across both sides. This is a nonpartisan office. And we need to stop thinking in terms of partisanship and more about what can we do together and what we, how far we can go together.
Mary Beth, I, I just want, Jerry, sorry to interrupt you. I just want Mary Beth to be able to answer the same question that Roseanne was asked, which is what would her priorities be in terms of funding in the county?
Well, I believe that we are going to need funds directed toward the transitional kindergarten as, as we take the two to three years to fully implement it. And there are additional needs around childcare and family resources because families are back to work. Students need places to be. After-school programs, of which I administered and ran, are safe havens for schools. And I'd love to see more funding go into that. It becomes an extension of that child's learning day and also a conduit to some of the enrichment and social capital that wasn't available otherwise. There are really, really great programs, learning labs, boys and girls clubs, but having school site operations. And we do have quite a few after-school programs. But early childhood education is a place to invest money. That is where it all begins, getting kids a firm foothold on the experience. They arrive at school on day one, ready to learn with the resources behind them. And yes, we're united in seeing that succeed.
I, I, um, just situational awareness. We got about 10 minutes left. So Gwen, I really want to get to this literacy question.
Let's go. Go.
Mentioned a couple of times because it just seems like such a big piece of everything that we're talking about. And as you both know, there's been this debate within the pedagogic community for going back, what, 40, almost 50 years about what's the best way to teach, to teach reading. Lucy Cawkins, who was famously supportive of the balanced literacy approach, which is sort of not phonics is the easy way to think about it, has recently said, you know, I, I think I was wrong about all this. So I, I want to ask this, to what extent do you two think that we should be focused on the so-called scientific reading or heavily on phonics approach as opposed to the balanced literacy or some of these other recognition programs? And I think, who was first, Roseanne?
Mary Beth is first this time.
Mary Beth. Okay. Go ahead.
Kids come to us with different learning modalities that they prefer to work in or they must work in. We have a lot of neurodiversity. There is a philosophical divide that pits teaching phonics, how to sound it out, and teaching meaning, how it, to think it through. And I think we need both. In short, there are a number of reading programs. My children went through California schools. I can't tell you how many times the pendulum swung. But in the end, it is introducing children to books, introducing children to the sound of, of reading, of what it syntax and cadence, and all aids comprehension that's going to help us drive literacy. It's a whole language method, also combined with phonemic awareness. Decoding is really important. It has to happen. It is happening. And as I said, it's happening in different ways on different days. But our organization that I have is being one of them. I've been a Partners in Ed board member for over 15 years. I volunteered in schools for 30 years. This is really near and dear to my heart. It's important. The Carpenteria Children's Project, of which I'm a board member, is introducing a dual language immersion program this year. We have two and three-year-olds that are starting that way. And anecdotally, these are meeting with really excellent outcomes. We'll see, you know, test scores have been kind of flat. Two years of COVID has not helped. The California dashboard, nothing's been released, but we'll start to see. And I, I really believe we're going to be climbing out of one of the worst, especially in our area with natural disaster on top of natural disaster. And let's add a pandemic. We're, we're getting there.
All right. Roseanne, and, and again, stipulating that the, the county board doesn't have, you know, direct oversight of any of this, but I'm really more interested in teasing out value of each of them.
I would be happy to.
What are you on this whole literacy thing?
Thank you. Yes. I want to frame this in the context of addressing the majority of our students that are challenged in this area. We have over 65% of our students that are English learners that really don't have the best English skills. They are still classified under that. And so it's very important to this community as, as well as a whole, the, the boats all float up at once, that, that English is key. I have helped parents who have, I have advocated for parents that really feel they've gotten the short end of the stick with not having enough English and math too, with the basic education. But going back to this, phonics, they feel is very important. If they speak Spanish primarily at home, it's very important that they get English at school. How else are they going to learn it? And so regarding the, comparing these different types of curriculum, I, I'm not sure if it's balanced literacy. I don't recall which one it is. There's been so many. The, the objection to that one is the teacher holds up a flash card. It's a picture of a horse and it says horse at the bottom to teach them to read the word horse. Well, the child raises their hands and said, hand and says pony. Well, they read. I'm sorry, that doesn't cut it. So there is a lot of controversy on the way to do it. The main thing is give them the English. They need the English to move forward. English is tied not only globally to the world economy. There's a direct correlation with, you know, economic success, but locally as well. These kids can't even get out of high school and get a job at CVS because they can't read and do math. It's atrocious. Thank you.
Jerry, I want to make sure that we get to two other areas. And one that we kind of didn't touch on, but it was part of what do you think is a priority for the county? Can you both briefly talk about school safety? Obviously, it's such a big deal in this country. Our kids are, those of us who have kids in public school, they're, they're like afraid to go to school. So what can the county do to help in that regard? Roseanne, should go first.
Oh, thank you. That's a real hot potato. Well, as you know, not long ago, they did remove the resource safety officers from the campuses. Honestly, you would think the way it was presented that it overwhelmed. Honestly, you would think the way it was presented that overwhelmingly, that's what everybody wanted, but that's not true. It was almost fifty-fifty. And what happened was what brought it to a head. I think it was well-intended. However, the consequence of the anti-bias training was that it oversensitized students to each other's differences rather than come together as a melting pot. It became the dividing pot, and we started seeing turf wars everywhere. The other problem, the increase of drugs. There are a lot of reasons why people were on edge. Now, the other thing is people assumed that these were officers with uniforms and guns. No, these are people that have established relationships with not only the staff, but the students got to know them. In fact, they helped a lot of people. You know, they were going down the wrong path, and a lot of the abuse cases, they were the first line that those were reported to. So it's not popular with a lot of people. And in fact, some people are saying, oh, please bring them back. But it's become a political football, and that's really sad. So there's my two cents.
Okay, Mary Beth?
Well, first of all, I think that schools need to be a safe haven for all students from the moment they walk in. I think their families should feel safe and protected. I'm in favor of common sense gun gun laws. And in fact, tonight, I'm speaking to a group called Moms Demand Action on reform and been involved with with gun reform for quite some time. But the county ed works with districts to make sure that all have a safety plan. And law enforcement and first responders support our schools. Case in point, last week with Bishop Diego, there was a lockdown and it was, it turned out that there was no actual threat, but SB CEO was in direct and immediate contact, and I believe will continue to be on that front line. We've been in emergency crisis mode, as I said, for years now, and Susan and team have created an incredibly effective communication rollout and process that is very responsive in real time, and I found them to be extremely accessible.
What about Roseanne's point about the safety resource officers? Could you just address that briefly?
Well, each district is different. And, you know, again, you're 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 talking about private district issues, which county ed trustees have no jurisdiction over or oversight over. In my own community, we have a community resource officer and have that position has gone in and out. It's sometimes it's a matter of funding. Many things are a matter of funding, and so if we get some more of that state money, that could be something that schools would elect to use it.
Oh, states rolling in money. Don't worry about a thing. Don't worry about a thing. All right, Gwen, you want to ask another, one more question?
Well, I I just, yes, I I do. So obviously, an extreme divisiveness was born out of the comprehensive sex education curriculum. And I know you're not responsible for that in the district, but from a values perspective, I'm wondering what you think about kids learning about gender identity in school, and do you consider that grooming?
Who's first on this one? I think Mary Beth is.
Yes, I'll happily take that one on. I think that that narrative that was provided erroneously in terms of there being curriculum directed toward grooming children was extremely corrosive. It undermined what's really happening in the classroom, and it sent out a signal. And people responded who heard the dog whistle implied there. I can't imagine anything being further from the truth. If kids do not learn to accept and understand more than one way, there's more one way of being a person or a family. There is more than one way of being of a pronoun being applied to you. School is the place to learn that, and that's where understanding is born. That is how children will develop critical thinking skills. That is how they will find their voice, and that is how they'll get involved in understanding civics, engagement, and representation. And that is how we will rebuild civic engagement with an eye toward a respectful public discourse, which is missing. And it seems timing-wise to align with the lack of of trust we're seeing nationally in some of our institutions. We we can fix this. We can model what we wish children to learn and how how to how to relate to one another, understanding and acknowledging that our viewpoints might be widely divergent. But, you know, here we are, we're two people that are running for the same office, and we have the same goals. We want students to be safe, to be seen. We want them to be successful, and we have different ideas about how to approach that.
Yeah, thank you.
Roseanne?
Yes, thank you. I, Mary Beth, I completely agree with you regarding the use of stereotypes. I I I don't approve of that, and I don't condone that. I don't agree with that. Respectful discourse, I absolutely agree with that. And along with that goes being heard, being listened to, being acknowledged. And that's when people get mad when they're not. So regarding the lack of trust, yes, there is a lack of trust. And why is that? Because parents are not being heard. They're not being listened to. For example, in the choice of sexual education materials, overwhelmingly, meeting after meeting, parents came forth and were requesting a hard curriculum. There were even several board members that would agree with that. It's just the the majority went the other way. They got outvoted. And so it's really sad that there was such discord about it. People felt strongly. And yes, I do believe we have to expose and and show our kids what's out there today. And yet be sensitive also with the parents. They wanted sex education. There was this stereotype out there that if you didn't agree with teen talk, then you didn't want your children to learn any sexual education and be left in the dark age. That's not, that's absolutely not so. There were a lot of people that were very pleased to have that needed sexual education and that that be a component of public health, but they wanted the hard curriculum. And so parents were not heard, and that's where the trust was lost. The majority of parents were not heard.
But you just, but you, so you're saying you are comfortable with kids learning about gender identity in school, you personally?
I think at a certain age, they're going to see this, and I think they need to know what this is. I do object to, I think they were presenting that a little bit too early, even before puberty. And so, no, you're calling me on on things. I I don't have the curriculum in front of me. So I don't want to be quoted as saying, well, this and that, but that was my understanding of what I saw of the objection of the parents.
All right. Just on that very small point that that Gwen just asked about, that that Roseanne responded to, Mary Beth. Do you think that K through three is too early for students to be learning about gender fluidity, non-binary relationships, and to in fact be aware of of what their own choices would be in?
You know, there is a difference between learning and grooming, and that's a real some people would like to put a finer point on it. There is never too early an a teachable moment, and I think kindergarten kids are asking legitimate questions. We need to answer them honestly. But they're also making their own assertions and assumptions based on their understanding concepts now, what's same and what's different. And this is a time that you can acknowledge something that is in your community without placing a judgment on it, a value, that this is good and this isn't. It just is.
All right.
And it starts with small, small concepts, and then it can grow toward more sophisticated concepts. And there is a curriculum for this, and it is mandated, but the the framework is how to apply the curriculum, and that is up for input. I'm sorry.
Gwen, I think we we're we're going to run into our next.
So can we give everyone just one, literally one minute? Obviously, Jerry and I tried to come up with some questions that are on people's minds, and we wanted to give people a strong enough sense of sort of where you're coming from as candidates, but we couldn't cover everything. Is there anything that we didn't talk about that, or ask you about you or your reasons for doing this that you would like to tell us in closing? So I don't.
I think Roseanne, did Roseanne got the first question? Did she not? So Mary Beth goes first here.
I think, I think.
Other way around.
That's fine. It doesn't matter. Whoever wants to go, who would who would like to go? I believe Roseanne is the next one going first.
Thank you so much. I'll try to combine these two together for efficiency. We didn't really get into much about special education. There was, they were investigated last year at the county for over-identification of special needs. It turned out that there was an over-identification of special needs. They were actually English learners. And that goes into why do we have this problem? Why are they not learning English? Well, they've been trapped. They've been trapped ever since they entered school. When a parent brings a child to school for enrollment, there's certain qualifying questions. One of them being what languages are spoken in the household? If the child has down both English and Spanish, they automatically go to ESL. If it's just English, they go to English. But these are two different tracks, and they're offered different classes all the way through. By fifth grade, if they can't test out his English proficient, which most of them don't, they stay in that track all the way through secondary. We are raising secondary citizens. And we have to stop doing that. To get true equity in education, you have to offer the same opportunities in education. And so I just want to make that very clear, that that is one of the biggest things that I think could make the most profound change in education if people were aware of that and they demanded that they stop that.
Thank you.
It's discriminatory.
Thank you, Roseanne. Mary Beth?
I'll just end with saying, I think there are three reasons why I should be considered for a vote. And the first having to do with experience. I've served in this role for nine years. I understand the functions, the services, the internal programs of SB CEO, especially with regard to budget and board policies. My background in education, the years of work I've spent with the nonprofit sector and corporate philanthropy, and in my current position as executive director of a foundation that looks at budgets and grants millions of dollars a year, I am deeply entrenched in the nonprofit community and the partnerships therein. I understand you must you must collaborate with multiple stakeholders, and that has really helped inform my perspective. I'm dedicated. I'm accessible. I am deeply involved and aligned with community building. This is a historical involvement that goes way back. I'm on way too many boards, it's true. But my board involvement and leadership has always been centered on children and families. And I consider myself an advocate for student and families in my current role as trustee. I'm an ambassador of county ed. Thank goodness more light is being shown on this office because there's so many things that come from it that people weren't aware of before. But I'm also a conduit for for parent concerns in my trustee area. And for that, I feel like I've earned some broad-based support and and trust. But values is where it's, it's, it's hits home for me. I stand firmly for inclusion in schools. I feel like schools must be safe places for children and families regardless of race.
All right. Thank you, Mary Beth. I hate to, I hate to cut you off, but we, well, never mind. All right, well, listen, I want to thank Mary Beth Cardy and Roseanne Crawford for taking the time, and Gwen and I both know that it's not easy being a political candidate, putting yourself out there and and, you know, asking for votes and and.
And even less easy to be a school board member.
And and dealing with people like us, my my most importantly. So thanks again, and good luck in your campaign, and we'll have this posted soon.
Thanks to both of you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.